... There was a flash, but anyway. The phone was ringing. You know, I could get it turned off. I'm there. So I...
And I...
I stood there.
Phone ringing.
And nothing would hit it.
What's that signal? I think it's ringing. So it must have been the line.
Hi, how are you? Good, good to see you. I ask every time if you die, if you die, so far you're helping.
Would you like to look at the cookie, Mary? Start by salute the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of Georgia, stand one nation under God, in the name of our beloved God.
I take the motion on our past agenda. So, can I hear your second?
Second.
All in favor?
Oh.
Any adjustments to the agenda, sir?
Um, I don't...
Other than what you told me?
Yeah, other than what we discussed, I have not...
Alrighty. Any public comment tonight? Joyce?
Joyce Ryan, um, I just want to thank Adam, my bro, Colin, bro, they came down and they fixed it yesterday and yesterday. Thank you. I know it's a pain, I've been pushing and pushing, but it's done. I appreciate it.
I appreciate your patience.
Anybody else? Yes, sir?
We in River Show with Town of Oxford.
Johnson River Show is the Town of Oxford.
We'd like to ask the selectmen to do an ordinance for towing in the town. So the towing is done fairly between all the towing companies in town and not just one specific company getting all the business mostly.
Hey, I don't believe that we've done one of those in the past.
No, I've done a lot of work reading other towns' ordinances and kind of drew up a draft. I know that the town lawyers and stuff would also have to look at it, but I did kind of bring a copy to everybody if you wanted to take a look at it and what we have to do, I don't know. But everything used to be on rotation until the current police chief took over and now the police office is called who they want, when they want. We've all invested money, we all pay our taxes, and we don't get no more business. It's not fair.
Okay. Well, I would, what I, I mean, how about you read me what you got there and we'll give a copy to all select people and we can discuss this and, you know, maybe also get some input from the police chief on his side of the story and whatever else and then we could take it up at another meeting. Would that be alright with you?
Well, yeah, I don't expect you're gonna make a decision today, but...
Yeah?
I don't know what the process is to do this, but I know...
I didn't know we had a problem with this, to be honest with you.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay? But I mean, we could take a look at it and see what we can come up with and, you know, we could let you know, maybe for another meeting, it might happen that way, it might not, but, you know, we will take a look at it.
And how would we know?
We'll notify. Have you given these information?
This is the first I'm hearing, so...
Yeah.
Yeah, I talked to Wendy about it to see if there was already an ordinance that was just not being enforced and stuff and she looked into it and it wasn't, so...
Right. I wasn't aware that we had them. But we could take a peek at it and then...
I just think that we need one so that all, there's at least four towing companies in town and everybody that pays taxes should get a fair share if it's a police-related tow and they're towing a car. It used to go to Oxford Dispatch and they would say send the next breaker on rotation. And since the police chief took over, he wanted to do his own thing. He told us he was gonna start his own and he never did. And now the police offices, they just call who they want, when they want. It seems that basically one company gets 90% of all the tows in town and that's not fair to the rest of us.
We can, we can take a look at it, okay?
Yeah.
Alright, thank you. Anybody else? Lois? From last meeting?
Yeah.
Oh, okay.
It was right here. Anyway. The one from last week was what's happening with the Robinson Mill project? Are they going forward? Are they...
Haven't really had an update on that. Do you know anything about it?
So they applied for community development block grants. They were approved for that and we're going through the process of, well, let me say, they were approved of the funding, but we're in the process of, you know, getting the grant administered to Terri Ann Holden from the state. She was here for one of the public hearings. So finalizing, getting the final steps of that. They were approved for, I believe it was $500,000 to demo the old warehouse spaces.
Yeah.
So it's still...
Are they taking down any that affects the way the dam comes into the mill? I'm not saying that right, but the water used to come right under the mill.
I think what this piece, these people, this piece is focused on the new, you know, the ware, the newest part, the warehouses that have zero historical relevance. So that's what this piece focuses on.
Okay. And how many, they probably don't know, how many units, thank you, does that amount to?
The demo?
Yeah, the ones they're gonna build where the demo is taking place.
I don't think they're gonna build any units where the demo is taking place. I believe that'll be parking in open space. The units are going in the existing structures.
Yeah.
I believe, yeah.
The ones with historical value, might say that right?
Correct, yes, yeah. The brick, the brick buildings, yeah.
Oh, that's the one that our water went under. Not even did it say, somebody knew that.
We had that, last time we did work on the dam, we capped that off.
We did, yeah. Is it, is it capped off so that it's appropriate for people to go in there and live? I mean, I mean, I think the whole building...
I believe we poured about, poured 18-inch wall there to cap that off when we did the last work on the dam.
So none of the water gets under there?
Correct.
Yeah, that was before my time, but yeah, what Mr. Hunter's saying is my recollection of...
Well, I know they, they thought they capped it off. I just wondered if it, if it went down well.
It had been, it had been dry any time, but I just don't say did that, so...
Okay, that was that one. Four people wanted to know. There's people waiting to, waiting to play, I tell you. Oh, the road into the dump isn't wide enough. There's honestly this, um, I'm not saying the road path isn't wide enough. Your setbacks are just growing in and they have the big dump trucks now. Man, they are big. And there really isn't room. If there's a little bit off, awesome. You can't see them coming and you don't know they're coming and there, there is no way to miss them. So it, I'm not blaming the trucks, it's just that there should be clean out and whitened out. Cut the trees down on the sides and clean them out. It's 75 foot right away, so there's plenty of room there to take both sides. So that, that one, that's just my opinion. Uh, this one, when I was down there, I don't know, this week, the, uh... Anyway, just, I wanted you to look at the water that we got from town, town people, town bond. And it's really all rusted, even I can see that. So it's not in good condition and I had seen the one that we were getting rid of. It's the one that we're getting rid of, I guess, tonight, I don't know. It's undone, you know, got bits coming in. So my question is, have we really decided that we should get rid of the one that was up, down at the dump or the one at the, at the road? But sure, was it burned, I guess?
I think you're gonna find that discussed this evening as an agenda.
Okay, but has anybody gone down and looked at it? Did you think it was worth 50 cents?
I think it's worth, I'd give it 50 cents, right? Absolutely, we would, but Lois, there is a little rust on it. You gotta understand, spend its life in the salt pile.
I do, and that's, I, what I can see tells me that there's a lot more under there that I wasn't gonna crawl under there and see because it's spent its time in salt.
Well, I think we got, I think maybe we could pop it up a little bit, yeah.
Well, I just question whether or not we should be looking at keeping the one that we're getting rid of.
Well, we might down and have a little discussion. I was down and had a little discussion with Ed the other day on it and it is, but I mean, it is considerably newer than the one we had that was there. Did the other one, the other one have some things that looked better yet? But I, we've heard that the transmission was going in that for three years. Okay, it hasn't gone yet and I'm hoping that it doesn't go right away either. But all the, any problems with the southern one? But the, we, what we've always done is take the one that's highway. Okay.
Yeah, I understand that. I don't have a problem with that. It's just that take the best, keep the best one so we can trade it in next year if really one of them's gonna have to buy it for free.
Right, I understand your opinion.
Okay. Well, I guess that's it.
Okay. Anybody else have any dissent?
So I'm here for Eric Leonard. He has lost property, tax applied property.
Right, we were gonna give you a chance when we discussed that.
Oh, okay.
Of, see that you get a chance to talk then. Anything else on, of a comment? Okay. Alright, we'll close that part of it. We'll start off with our business items. And the first one is appointment of Jody Swayze for an election talent clerk. Still through, but you're second.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Okay. And then who would come to your topic? What would you like to tell us?
Um, you can buy the property back, you have the money.
You have the money.
You have the taxes, you have back taxes.
Oh.
It hasn't been acquired yet. It's, we just has back taxes, right?
No, these are foreclosed though. You want me to give you the rundown real quick?
Yes, yes, I would.
So what, what these folks are talking about is that we do have property tax foreclosures. These go back to, you know, FY 2022 year. Um, I do want to throw out there that there's been a lot of changes to the property tax foreclosure law through the state. Um, but we have currently four properties. You all have a spreadsheet here that when you put together that lists off these four properties with their current values and the balances owed. What, what I'm thinking and would like to recommend to the board is that we now have to give a 90-day, meaning the town has to give a 90-day notice of our intent to sell if we're looking to sell any of these foreclosed properties. So what I was going to propose to the board is that maybe we give a 90-day window for the, the previous owner of record, like these folks here potentially, to, if they can pay all the back taxes to include, you know, to include fees and interest and so forth, that we give them an opportunity to potentially do that. And then when we hit the 90-day mark, that we then move forward with working with a broker as the law describes to put the, put the property on, on the market and then move it that way. Uh, if the board is open to that, I would ask that the board give the manager a position to execute the quit, claim deeds and so forth if we did that. So that was the thought process that I was having.
So they would be allowed to purchase this if they want to purchase it now?
If the board so chooses, yes. We'll send out, so the law requires that we send out a letter to the, the previous owner of record if we intend to sell it, you know, within, you know, 90 days. So I would propose that we send out two letters. One that says at the 90-day mark, we're going to put this out for sale. But then another letter with it that says if you come forward with the appropriate funds before 90 days, that the town will sell it back.
So my question is, if they came in tomorrow with the money to pay it, you can take the money tomorrow?
If the board tells me I can tonight, I can, yes. Yep. And who would quit claim deed? Yep.
I would, I would support that and have it support. If somebody doesn't, can't come up with a full amount, but they're making a good fake effort, you look at that as well and maybe bring it back to us.
Bring it back to you? Okay.
Say the first one less than $2,500, if they showing an attempt, you know, maybe they can pay half or whatever portion, some sort of effort to try to catch up.
I mean, I'd be cautious on payment plans myself, but...
There's still that 90-day window. I think we could probably revisit again 90 days if they have done that. Can't we?
Yeah, I mean, we certainly can. Uh, I certainly wouldn't deed anything back until you receive full, you know, correct...
Any other opinions on that?
No, I agree with Dana. Within that 90 days, if they pay so much within those nine, that 90 days, I would agree with that and I would agree with anybody that has the money to pay for it all upfront for...
Was that a motion, Mr. Dillingham?
Yeah.
Did you second it, Scott?
I did.
Sharon did?
Yeah.
Okay, okay. Alright, any other discussion on it? All those in favor of the appeal? Okay?
So if you do have the funds tomorrow and the clerk's office is open again, if you can come back in and see them and they can take care of it, okay?
Cool, thank you.
Alright.
Thank you so much, guys.
You're welcome. Alright. Have a good night.
You too. Actually, me too. She was having a good time.
Okay.
Hi, I'm Marie Davis. The lady's name is Twitchelle. I just found out from Wendy last Tuesday when she called a cousin of mine to ask if she knew any of my family. My three siblings and I own a piece of land on Fourth Street and I can pay back taxes. I could have that day, but Wendy told me it was lost. I came up and talked with her afterwards. And she can attest that I've been here, well, she can't for the whole 45 years that I've lived in Oxford, but that I own vehicles and pay taxes and I'm voter approved. And I was just wondering, from what you're saying, if I'm understanding right, if I come in and pay my back taxes, we could be deeded back the land? And that's what I'm asking and I can give three addresses of the four of us?
No, I, if, if you got the, I don't know why you always be any different than the last?
It's just like the rest of them.
Yeah. You pick somebody tomorrow or she's open, she's here and...
I just wanted to be sure.
We take care of that.
You can update them addresses.
Yes, I will do that tomorrow.
Okay. Alright, thank you. Okay. Five point three.
Still jumping on that?
Can you jump them out?
Cool, alright. So if you remember correctly, a little while ago, there's been some on and off discussion regarding the idea of having a referendum-style town meeting versus an open town meeting. Um, that's due to the turnout and so forth. So in the June election, we did have a straw poll that we did. We only had about, what, 274 people participate out of the multiple that voted that day. There was 120 people were in favor of open town meeting, 154 were in favor of a referendum-style town meeting, which would be like voting at the ballot box. The selectmen had asked the manager to put together a potential ballot for November, an actual referendum question, asking this question on whether or not folks would favor doing a, again, referendum town meeting. So I want to just reiterate that the board of selectmen do have the, the board of selectmen have the authority year to year to, um, to set the town meeting as a referendum town meeting. If we do it year to year, we can do that. We can't do it, you know, forever, you know. Going into the future, you'd have to vote on that every year and it has to be done 90 days or more prior to the actual town meeting. So the selectmen had asked that I put together, I worked with the town attorney to make sure it was good verbiage, a actual referendum question. So my question to the board is, do you still want this referendum question included in November? Um, if you do, I do think that we are going to, it's gonna be a big election. We're gonna make, make sure that we have the ballot machines and so forth for this 'cause I don't think we want to be hand counting given the number of people that are coming through. So, um, just looking for the board's direction. Are you looking to still have that as a question? Do you like my language? How would you like to proceed?
I mean, I don't remember the exact minutes of the meeting, but I thought we could throw it out there to see what they want, what the people want. And if the people like to see it on the thing, I don't know what I was gonna do, put it on there. That'd be just my opinion.
I guess I agree 'cause how it reads is, do you favor authorizing something to consider changing the, the method? So I, I, I mean, it doesn't bind us to changing it, it just tells, you know, I think they're trying to get the pulse of the, of the citizens of town to see...
I mean, there's nothing saying that they wouldn't vote it down.
Correct. Yep, I mean, you, you could get a result either way. And again, as, as Scott just said, I mean, it, it will be up to the selectmen to decide, you know, no matter what. So, in what direction to go.
You have a comment on it? I see you're looking at it.
Well, it is what it is. You, you, you're gonna take away some, potentially take away something from the, the people that show up dedicated every year to the town meeting to vote in person. Um, and you're gonna leave that up to the 2,500 people that are gonna turn out in November probably, if not more, that never have been to a town meeting and, and only vote once every four years. A, a good portion of them. I mean, the clerk can pull the numbers on how many people turn out in a presidential election compared to any other vote.
Year vote. I mean, my only thing, Dana, is when, when they actually did the straw poll, that was nothing special.
No, I, I think, I think your numbers are probably gonna be even more heavily favored to doing a, a referendum budget. And I'm, I'm good with putting it out there. It doesn't bind us, like Scott said, it doesn't bind the board to decide to do that. And I think you have a very divided board on whether we do that or not and that's fine too. My question is, is this gonna be a problem on this election with a number of people? Do you have, they have the ability to do electronic counting?
So there will be a cost to that if we have to add an extra, if we have to add an extra ballot machines. I mean, it's what, was it $2,000? I think it was...
Plus, yeah, probably about 23, 24, 36, if I'm right.
The alternative is hand counting and that's substantial.
So I mean, it, I, I guess, I guess one of my, my takeaways from this is that yes, you want to take the temperature of folks, but ultimately it falls in the selectmen's authority. And if the selectmen are going to say, no, we're going to stick to an open town meeting, then maybe we don't need to do this exercise right now. If there are some thoughts that the selectmen are going to go to the referendum-style town meeting, then we should go through the exercise. But is that, I don't know if that makes sense? I mean, why?
I, I'm, so I'm probably swivel, but I'm not in favor of going that direction.
So I think everybody knows I do not support a referendum ballot vote for a budget for many reasons. Towns that have done it have gone back. Um, I believe in the simplest form of government and which is an open town meeting voting on the budget. You're, yes, you're probably gonna get less people at an open town meeting than at a referendum vote. Um, like you said, the selectmen, ultimately, it's their decision. Um, I know Caldi is very opposed to this as well because we both stated that opinion here. I cannot see spending $2,300 to have a voting machine to count this ballot when the selectmen could make a decision to go either way. Um, in November, it's gonna be a nightmare enough because of the size of the election to expect those votes to be counted by hand. So I'll vote no tonight, only because I don't support a referendum vote for, for a town budget. I think it has to be discussed on the floor of the board, budget item by budget item.
Well, I'll, I agree with you, Jen. I like the town meetings. I've always gone to town meetings. But I know I get a certain amount of people that tell me that they don't take good care of that idea. I don't, you know, I'm not saying they're right or wrong, but I don't know if it's really me to make the decision. I think it's the people's decision and I could live by it. And we, if you take a straw poll and more were in favor, I mean, granted, it was only a snapshot of that particular day on who voted or whatever, but it's all, it will be on this other day, you know? I, I don't, I don't have any answer, but I think, uh, the number of people that we have show up for a town meeting versus the percentage of people we got here, I, I just feel that lots of times we, we should have more participation. If, if having it that way is gonna give you more participation, I don't know. I think it's almost, I mean, obviously what we're doing or trying to do hasn't worked. I'm willing to try something that might. That's all I can say.
So the number of people who actually voted in the straw poll compared to the number of people that actually voted was quite a bit less. Is that correct?
Mm-hmm.
I do know that there were a lot of people who were not even aware that there was a straw poll there. Um, I came in and out, so not everyone that came in voted on that straw poll. So I would say that that's not a good, um, measurement to use either. If everybody voted on it, that's one thing, but, um, not everybody did because not everybody knew the straw poll was there.
And there were a lot of people that just said they weren't interested in...
Yeah.
Participating.
Yeah.
Are we gonna vote on this, by?
So I'm looking for approval, um, I'm looking for approval of the, you know, ballot language and to move forward with this or not. So I'm, I'm hoping the board will vote. And we are kind of in a time, you know, if we're gonna do this, I need to know tonight so that I can get Wendy in the ballot square.
Where this is the last meeting before that cut off would be in place?
Yeah, I think so. I think, yeah.
It, it, yeah. And it depends on when I can get...
Right, the sticks and...
Um, the actual, that they, they had them, they had them at this stage. I'm hoping that they did, not that they didn't count.
Yep.
But the 2,000, that's the, the greatest one, too.
Mm-hmm.
Anybody else got anything to say about it?
Are we saying that we have the, the 22,000, whatever it was for the, uh, do we have to get more machines just for this one? Or are you saying you need more machines for the general election as a whole?
So the, the voting machines, correct if I'm wrong, Wendy, are, they have to be specific to the state and federal elections. We cannot do a municipal one, so we would have to rent additional machines, yes. Because we can't, for whatever reason, the state does not want to allow us to mix...
Even though we have two, we have, currently have such a volume, so both would be, would stay.
I'm gonna get knocked in. Because we don't need to do this, we still have the authority to have a referendum vote if we still choose to do so next year. We don't need to do a poll for...
Correct. Correct. You guys can, you have the authority as a selectman to choose either way.
Alright, so anybody else got anything else to say? I'll put it to a vote. Okay. All that are in favor of letting the people decide? All that are opposed?
Opposed that you put it that way.
It's a two-two.
Two-two.
So it fails.
I, I do think we can have more discussion on this about doing it in June. I'm not completely against doing it one time and trying it out. But like Sharon said, it's been tried and...
It's been tried in Oxford?
No, no, in other towns, maybe it's put right back.
But towns where I've been.
Okay.
But I don't think this part's in order.
Move on. Uh, five-four. Transfer station, on that note. Five-four, transfer station, son and mother.
All right, so you folks have, in front of you, I did add to the fact that the bid's closed. You'll see that the 2002 Volvo, the bid's closed. The high bid was $24,800, and that was to David Moore using municipal bid. So, I know there's been some discussion regarding whether or not that's the right way to go as far as to sell the old transfer station loader. I was requested to get some information. The transfer station loader that we're, that we're looking at potentially selling through the bid process is a 2002 Volvo L-70 with 11,250 hours. The one from the highway department that would potentially be transferred to the transfer station is a 2010 John Deere 544K with 10,584 hours. So, with that information in mind, I, I know we'll focus on what things there.
So, I'm not gonna support awarding this bid tonight for many reasons. I don't think we have done our due diligence, and I think we need to. Number one, we have two loaders. We bought a new loader. The loader that we had at the highway department wasn't even taken, didn't even want to take that as a trade-in. So, number one, that tells me that the condition of that loader is not very good. So, we did a lease purchase on the new loader. So, that leaves us with the transfer station loader and the highway department loader, and which one we're gonna keep. So, the one from the highway department went to the transfer station. We do not know the condition of either one of those loaders. We've been told there's a transmission problem. We know there's rust. We know the hours, we know the years. Just because one loader is newer doesn't mean that that's in better condition. Before we decide what loader we're going to keep and use, I believe it is imperative to have whoever does the maintenance on the loaders to come in and assess both loaders to tell us the work that is needed on both of them, what the problems are, where they think these loaders are gonna be in five years, what their useful life is left on them, and what these loaders are gonna be used for. Once we know the work that is needed on both these loaders, then we can make an educated decision on which one to keep, because the one we are going to keep is going to be the one that has the least liability for us. You also mentioned here in the memo about what to do with the proceeds from whatever loader we sell. It is my opinion that the money that is received from whichever loader we sell needs to go into a reserve account to do the repairs of the loader, on the loader that we're going to keep. So, I do not believe this loader should be awarded, should be awarded for the transfer station loader. I believe this assessment needs to be done. And I, I think that whichever loader is the best one to keep is the one that we should keep. I would also like to hear from the transfer station supervisor, Edward Knightley, and I would like to have his opinion on both loaders and which one he feels would do the best work there. Now, he may say he wants to keep one or the other, but if it's not the loader that's in the best condition, then I think we need to seriously look at keeping whichever one is not gonna cost us the most amount of money. So, I can't support awarding this bid tonight until we know which loader we're going to keep, and that would be the one in the best condition.
Anybody else got anything to say? Scott?
Do we, do we have the maintenance records for both the loaders?
Can you run down the show?
And Jim produced, Jim's produced like a spreadsheet type thing that he's got, so.
All right. I guess I, I'd be in favor of Sharon's idea is that ultimately it's, you know, just because it's the newer one doesn't necessarily mean it's the better of the two. I guess I'd like to see the maintenance records and have the respective companies that service both Volvo and John Deere look at both of them. See what they choose, or they, I don't know, or. I would assume that it's been the same one that have done the maintenance.
And I believe Kackenin, Kackenin and the old, the transfer station. He's done it first, so that's him now.
And I don't believe he's brand specific, right? He, we're, right, he's not like a Volvo dealer, he's a-
Yep.
And I did leave a message with, with, I always get his name wrong. The gentleman, the, the service company. I left a message with him on his phone earlier asking, trying to find out what it would cost for us to have those evaluations done. I did not hear back from him yet.
Can you tell me how that municipal bid is good for?
All right.
The case, the case, but.
No, I believe we have, we have a little bit of time or award, but I don't, it's not like 30 days or anything. I apologize, I don't have that off the top of my head, but I believe we have a- I don't, we don't, I don't believe we have until the next meeting, if that's what you're asking.
That's what I was gonna ask.
I'm, I'm not opposed to having them evaluated. I think that's something we should have decided six months ago.
Well, I mean, I went over, took a look at them, and I don't plan to be a little man, but I honestly, does it have some rough? Yes. Does it have a tire that goes flat? Yes. Should that have been taken care of? Yes. But, in my opinion, if you have the two of them here, one's ten, what, no, it's, one's a ten and one's a four?
One's a-
What's that?
O2.
O2. So, I mean, you know, the guy gave you a pretty good offer on that. I guess if you wanna put it, I mean, if we were gonna get into having a, anybody that goes and does that, the best thing you're gonna get is a gasket, but nobody's gonna tell you guaranteed that that one's going longer than that. I, you know, I, I get it, the rust is there, and I get it you got the wheel thing, and I get it that the fender is all loose, there weren't any bolts in the fender, the brake pedal stock. I mean, there's no question, there's some things here that I'm 100%, but I really don't think they're bad enough to condemn it, my opinion, but.
Sharon's here.
So, I, I think it's important to know the condition of the tires. I think it's important to know, I don't think anybody sitting at this table can say what the condition of the transmission is, what the condition of any part in either loader is, unless we have a maintenance person. And if Mr. Kackenin has been servicing the transfer station loader, and he can do the other one, then have him look at both of them and tell us if, what the condition of the transmissions are and every other part, do they need tires replaced? We should look at that when we're going to keep, decide to keep one or the other. And as far as what we've been offered, that shouldn't even be a factor that we're considering. I don't really care if someone's offering us $24,000 if we're going to sell the machine that is in the better condition. And I-
I don't think you have.
I would have to say that probably the transfer station loader is in a better condition if we're offered $24,500 for it, and we were offered $0 for the highway loader. That would how I would-
Do you know that to be true, that you were offered $0 for the highway?
I was told that today.
It was not included in, in, we weren't given trade offers, you know, at the time when we went and get the quotes to get to these barrels.
I think we're clearly at an impasse, and I will make a motion that we have them both evaluated, and decide who you want to evaluate them. And I can potentially put both of them out to bid. We get our evaluations, and we'll have bids on both, and you decide which one we're gonna sell. Because we're gonna sell one. You know what I mean?
Okay.
That's my motion.
I'll sign it.
Okay. Motion to make. All in favor of the motion? All opposed?
So, I will do my best to see if I can work, get, get somebody scheduled to come and do the evaluation, and I'll bring that back to you folks when I have it in hand.
Can, can we contact the successful bidder and just let him know?
Yeah. What we're doing, yeah. Yep.
All righty. Let's move on to five-five. Fire Department Ambulance Discussion is updated.
So, the fire chief is here tonight to talk about this as well. She has drafted a letter that's included in your packet here. We get, we heard from the insurance company. The ambulance that was involved in the accident was totaled out. We'll be receiving approximately a insurance payout of about $201,000 minus the $1,000 deductible. So, fire chief has got a couple of good options. I was hoping that she would go over with you folks, see what your thoughts are.
So, I put two options here. The first one is a Demerz box, which is different than we have now on a Ford diesel chassis. Basically, we would have that ideally within three months, and that would cost plus or minus $380,000. Obviously, with just over the $200,000 that we get back from insurance, that leaves us having to find financing for about $180,000. The second option is the Braun box, which is what we have currently on a Ford gas chassis. The delivery of that would be late summer, early fall of 2025, so we'd be just over a year out, which actually we are not. It's fairly quick, because if you were to order one brand new right now, it's three to four years out, because we get in an accident in a terrible fashion. We get basically fucked to the line because we get priority because we're down in a month. That one's $430,000. Obviously, these are still kind of estimates, and that would mean we would need to find financing for $230,000. The major difference is, is the Demerz box have, we were talking about just before the meeting, is remountable one-time guaranteed, where the Braun box is remountable two guaranteed times, but likely three times, just because they're a higher quality box. I would rather have the Braun simply because operationally, that's what we already have. It's a tried and true box, very busy services use it, as Mr. Hunter was saying. We have, our boxes that we had were remounted from Portland's, South Portland, Scarborough, a lot of those places have remounted them many times. Pace has the Demerz. They actually went away from the Demerz because they didn't like it. The other thing about the two different options is the Braun box has a line placement, basically right now manufacturing, so it would be near identical to what we have, and we can make those changes because it's not being built yet. The Demerz truck has been built, has been painted. It basically is what it is. So, while an ambulance is still an ambulance, it's not the same operationally in the back. And obviously, in our job, it's really important muscle memory. Having things in the same spot is very nice. While they would generally be in the same spot, it wouldn't be identical. I just think operationally, yes, we can train and learn the differences, but I think when seconds matter, it's nice to have an identical box. And I do think that while it's more just over $50,000 or under $50,000 more, I think in the long run, it saves us hundreds of thousands because we have the ability to remount it more times. The other thing is the diesel, we have so many problems with the dust system. We're constantly having that worked on. I think more and more services are going to the gas ambulances, and I think that is the way we should consider going and waiting that year as opposed to three months. I think that really gets what we want and will last for a much longer time. We do have the loner for whether it be three months or a year. We have a loner no matter what, so it's not like we're gonna be down in a angle at some point. The service to the town will remain the same. It's just whether, you know, how the truck looks from the outside. But the service to the town regardless of what we do will obviously be the same.
What's happening with your, your old one, the body? There was nothing salvageable about that either?
No, so it's going to, what is it called?
Savage title?
Savage title, yeah. Someone can purchase it. Autotronics had made mention that they may purchase it, but they said that they may get into it, and it may not be, and they may have to scrap it. It wouldn't guarantee anything.
Because there is visible, correct if I'm wrong, there's visible warpage to the, to the box.
Yeah, if you guys wanted to come down and see it, I'm happy to show you, but the cab is actually pushed into the box, and if you stand on the side, you can see that it's caved to the box.
The, the loner, is that through the insurance because of the accident, or how do we have a loner?
So, Autotronics, we purchased the other ambulance through. Because we are customers of theirs, the insurance covers the first 45 days, and after that, we don't have to pay for it. They can still loan it to you. All we have to do is maintain it, just like we would the other ambulances. So, we'll do the oil changes and stuff like that on it, just like we would ours, and we'll put winter tires on it when we change ours back over to winter tires. But other than that, it's just the regular, the maintenance.
So, there's no loner thing?
Correct.
It was, it was part of, I'm sorry.
Part of the lease purchase agreement.
Oh, I see.
Prior to my, right, yeah.
I have a question.
Yes, please.
What's, the ambulance you'd have as a loner right now?
Yes.
Year, miles?
It's a 2015, it has 158,000 miles. The ambulance that we have is a 2016. It wasn't delivered till 2019, and it's got about $62,000. The one that was totaled had 58,000 miles on it, same here.
I'm not trying to be funny, because I don't know ambulances. Is, is that something they would be interested in selling?
The loner?
Correct.
The back of the ambulance is night and day, and as I was kind of explaining at the beginning, so Braun is the Cadillac.
Oh, it's not a Braun?
No.
It's not?
Demerz is the middle, and then I think it's Wheel Coach is the bottom. The loner's the bottom.
They didn't loan us one just like the one that it was.
Correct. They don't, they, they buy like older used ambulances or when they get trade-ins, like for example, Poland's buying two new ambulances. They'll trade those in. Those are honestly too new. They probably wanted to use those as loners, but they will basically take older ambulances and just keep them as loners. So, they're not, I mean, like I said, it's, it's the 158,000 miles. It's very different. It works fine for a loner, but I'd be nervous about that.
And are these new, the ones you're proposing?
Right, yeah.
And they're being built?
Yeah, so the Demerz are almost done. Like I said, they're as is, and then the other one is-
2025.
About to be, yeah, about to be, starting to be built.
And where would we, how would we fund the balance?
So, we had, we get the $200,000 from insurance, and then we did set aside $300,000 towards, you know, fire truck or, you know, fire vehicle purchases. I think we should also have a discussion about, because they're still talking about the mini pumper piece as well.
Which is out to-
Yeah, which is out to bid. I think that we should talk, if we were gonna go this route, look at, looking at lease purchase yet again. You know, lease purchase, would it make more sense to pay the difference with the money that was raised at town meeting for fire, you know, fire vehicle? Pay the difference here, lease purchase the mini pumper outright? I think, I think we would need to look at that. That would be my recommendation, is that we would look at the lease purchase.
Again, you don't have to, this is one of those, you know, your first payment is upon delivery.
Right.
And with the Braun, which is the one you prefer, that delivery wouldn't be-
Fall of 2025, so it'd be new budget central.
So, they're not asking for a down payment?
Correct.
But a signed contract?
Yes, a signed, a signed contract, but no, not a down payment. I guess I would just ask if we could, you know, what way you guys are leaning, just so we can hopefully get something on. Because no matter what, it does take time or it's gonna-
Are we, is this like gonna fall on like an emergency purchase? Or we go- Are we, is this like going to fall on like an emergency purchase or we go? Because I guess if it's not an emergency purchase, do we have to put this out to, out to bid?
The policy certainly says it should go to bid, but we do loans that point that policy, right?
Right. The selectmen have the authority to waive the bid policy or, or not. So we could, we could potentially put it out to bid with these specs for the, you know, Braun box. One of the things I think that, I think one of the things that plays into here is less about the chassis specifically, but the actual boxes on the ambulance sounds very single source, if you will.
Braun is, yeah.
I don't, I, I don't know if you can buy Braun boxes from multiple dealers or not, but.
No, you can't buy Braun, but there are other, obviously, there's boxes like, you know, there's many places. It's just, obviously, I felt like these were the ways to get them on the line and something coming. Because, like I said, you skip to the line when you're in an accident, unfortunately, you know, but at least you do get it quicker. And I don't know if that works when you put it out to bid. I believe you're back on that three to four, your timeline because you're to them, you're just a, another truck that's new. Where with Autotronics, where, like I said, we skip to the line, like for example, Poland just bought them. They'll still have their three to four years out, but we'll have theirs prior, ours prior to them.
Are there others that are comparable to the Braun?
Yeah. I'm not familiar with them. Like I said, I wanted to stay with the Braun because that's what Oxford already has and I do think it's important to kind of keep things similar, but I mean, you could go out to bid for, I don't know, 30 days, I believe, if it's a policy and then go back, but like I said, I just, I'm nervous about that because I don't know then if we get to go to the front of the line. So that means we may be three to four years out as opposed to 14 months. And I don't know if you would be cheaper either. You know, I think you'd be about the same price.
For that amount of money, I think it would make sense to go out to bid. I mean, we're going to put our specs out there for what we want, so we would, we would put specs out there for something that would be comparable to a higher quality most likely. That's just my opinion.
I think you're right on that. I mean, that's quite a lot of money for us just to do. And you know, but there's really a ton of difference between them two boxes. I mean, I'd have owned a Cadillac, that's all I'm saying.
Operationally, yes, but, I mean, like I said, an ambulance is still an ambulance. We can potentially work out anything. It's what we prefer and what we know.
Well, I mean, I don't really want to put you in the station wagon or anything.
Would the Demerz work? Yeah. I just think, like I said, you pay, you get what you pay for and the Braun is a tried and true with services a lot busier than ours and ambulance, the ambulance we sell at the station only has 62,000 miles on it. It's never remounted, but it still has a ton of life left in it. The way we treat them, I think we'd be very well served in a Braun again. But, you know, I'll do whatever you tell me to do.
I'll make a motion that we go out to bid for Christina.
Second.
Did you guys, you guys have the spec from? I believe there was some type of spec for last time we did. I don't know if that's still around at all or not, but.
Yeah, I do, I do have it. Sean had given it to me, but, yeah. It just needs to be updated, but yeah.
Which is, the ones that you all got stole up, the ones that got stole up, that was diesel and you're having trouble with it?
Yeah, both of ours are diesel.
Okay, but I mean, so you want go to, you want to go to a gas?
Yep.
And that would be part of the spec, right?
Yeah, and the same thing, like you would prefer Ford, I could say chassis, you know.
Alright, well, I, I, anybody else got some more discussion on this? Okay, all who was in favor of the motion to put it out to bid?
So we'll get together and get that bid together so we can get it out first thing next week.
Alrighty. Moving right along. Okay, we have some abatements here. Do we?
Make a motion to put all the abatements together. They're all for approval, recognition.
I hear a second on that?
I'll second. As long as there's no discussion.
Any more discussion? Nope. Good. All in favor?
Thanks for coming.
Yeah, pretty much. I guess we could go down to the town manager's update.
Okay. So, yeah, just a couple of quick quick items. The first thing is that Hogan with the pond, the grade control, grade controls we've been discussing. We have a pre-construction meeting on the 19th, which is next week, with the landowner, the Pratt, the construction company, and the engineer. And of course, this is a pre-construction conversation and planning for the project. Hopefully, it will start within a couple of weeks after that. So that's moving ahead. The transfer station, Bay Area RFP has been put out. Bids are due on the 3rd of September and will be in front of the selectmen on the 5th of September for potential award. And then 260 King Street, I'm sure you probably have already noticed, but the building has been, that structure's been removed and the site has been cleaned up. And I, we sent a bill to the previous owner for the cost of the demo and we'll go through that process. He has 30 days to pay the, you know, pay the tab and if he doesn't, then it gets leaned against the property.
Thought it looked pretty good when he got it on.
Yeah, I thought it was, yeah, it looks nice.
Yeah.
I didn't, I didn't realize how narrow that lot was to clean it out, so. But that's what I have for you on that. And then, moving ahead to very exciting news, I think, is we were, the town was awarded a $1.6 million grant with an $85,000 match for the Rabbit Valley Road. And that's to reconstruct and fix the drainage between basically where the casino parking lot is all the way down to the bottom of the hill where you get to the bonds down there. So working with Rob Prue from pine tree engineering and Daryl Sterling, the economic development consultant that we've talked about in the past. And of course, Jim from the highway department. Working together, we were able to put this through and we were rewarded that. Very excited. We'll be right on schedule. It'll fit right into what we were talking about before, so waiting for instructions from the state on how to proceed, you know, with the grant agreement. So of course, you'll see that anytime now. Once that is signed, then we will continue on with the design and surveying phase of this. Rob Prue feels like this can easily be a 2025 project, you know, the construction piece of this. So I think, I think this is really great news, so. I was actually pretty excited if you guys didn't notice when I but that's what I have.
Alrighty.
I guess my only thing would be that as soon as Rob and everybody else is done with the plan, I'd put it that out to bid as soon as they're hot off the press because
Yep.
I said a lot of companies would be well into their 2025 season.
I think the last page of that packet had the conceptual
Correct.
amount, which the guy must have ESP equals 1.7 million and the grants 1.615 for an $85,000 match.
Mm-hmm. Magical, yes. Well, I will say, I've worked with Rob, I've worked with Rob Prue quite a bit over the years. He is usually pretty spot on with his estimates. The gentleman definitely knows his, knows his stuff.
Let's hope it comes in. Just very close to that.
I would also agree with Mr. Hunter as far as getting that out. I have asked Mr. Prue, that's one of the services he provides, is to handle the whole RFP process. And I think with a project this size, it makes sense to use his expertise and just have him do it.
I agree. Alrighty. Any selectmen? Yes, guys?
I have a few. So first, I was going to talk about this, but Loz mentioned the transfer station road and the cutbacks. I think that the highway crew can go down there with their new equipment and cut back the sides, both sides of that road. I think that will help. And within the towns right away, whatever we need to cut down for trees to open that up so that we have a better sight because she's absolutely right. You cannot, cars cannot see what's coming because of the windiness of that road and so much growth into the, the travel road. So I would support that and I think we could use our own equipment to do that. So the first thing I would like to mention is King Street, because I have quite a few things on King Street. In front of where Mill is, the grass is about this high, probably three feet high off the curb. That's a state road. The town's responsible for the sidewalk and I think the town is also responsible for keeping that grass section next to the curb mowed as well. That mo, that grass hasn't been mowed for two years and it has grown up now to a height that really with Land's House gone, it makes the other side of the street look as bad as this house. So I think that we need to clean it up because there's a lot of people that travel that road and it just doesn't look very good. And that was pointed out to me by two neighbors. So the next thing on King Street is Pismo Beach Road. So if you come off King Street and go on Pismo Beach Road, the paved road down to where, where it's gravel going on to the Pismo Beach complex. Both sides of the road, the edges of the road on several sections as you drive down, the pavement is completely broken up on both sides. It might be broken up in this space and it's broken up, so you've got broken up pavement. You'll see where all of the, especially with it being wet right now, all of the tire marks of the vehicles that are actually driving on both sides of the road over the pavement, which continues to break that pavement up. Also on the paved section, the roads, several sections are gutted out and need, they need repair. They need to have those sections of the road cut out and repaved because they're all potholed out. When you get down to the bottom of the hill to take the right-hand turn into the area where the concession stand is, whenever we get a lot of rain, that side of the road gullies out really bad and the wa, because the water goes all the way down. That needs more fill again from the recent rains. And then when you get to the end of the paved section going on to the gravel section of, at the end of Pismo Beach Road, going across the road here, this way, there is a huge wide section that, and I wrote it tonight because I had a call on it, so I went down. Your tires are going in and you're coming out. Somebody's going to, if they're going a little bit fast than they do on that road, they're going to bottom out, they're going to blow a tire, but we need to have some fill where the, the pavement meets the gravel at the bottom of the road. We need fill on the side of the road where it's all gullied out from the rain. And I would like to have Jim and you to go take a look at the, the edges of the road and the sections of Pismo Beach Road that really should have some cutouts. Not all the road is bad, but where the potholed sections are all broken up, they really should be cut out and repaved. Then, if you go into the cemetery behind the congregational church, you're probably going to find over a foot of grass again in the cemetery. I don't know when that was mowed last, but I would guarantee it's, it's been probably weeks. And that was also brought to my attention today, so I took a drive in there and I do think that somebody needs to mow that cemetery. And I don't know the condition of the others because I didn't, I didn't go along. Thank you.
Anybody else?
Didn't we look at doing the retaining wall on the Pismo Beach Road with that?
Yes, we did. Why didn't I think about that?
We discussed a project there, widening that little bit and
We did, and so back to Rob Prue. I tasked him with doing engineering of that and he ended up having to look into doing a survey of that property to find out exactly where the property line was. I revisited that with him about 30 days ago and he was still in the process of that. I don't believe it really hit high on the priority, so I kind of rekindled the priority of that, so it's not been forgotten.
So theoretically, we could address a majority of those issues.
Yeah. The, the part of the road that is, is the top portion, not on that section there that is really bad, where the portions of the road should be cut out and repaved gets from King Street to Mill Street. That's where the road is the worst as far as the potholed areas.
You know, take a ride down there with Jim and I mean, it might be things that he and his group can just remedy.
Yeah.
I mean, if that's the case, then it'd be a cost-effective way, I guess.
Yeah, because there is a lot of traffic on that road with the boats and, you know, every, the morning from the the truck activities down, all the summer programs and, but there's a lot of boats and, you know, trailers that are up and down all the time. Thank you.
Anybody else got anything? I guess I'd have one, 10, 11, 12, 13.
And here's your abatements for signatures as well.
Oh.
Colleen. Have you done, are you still working on the Walmart one?
Yeah, about to start.
It's in the packet somewhere.
I just noticed that they tried to get it.
In the absence of a freeze, they tried. That's just the norm.
Thank you. They're persistent. They are.
It's very simple. Just blow a copy, change the year, put it back. So maybe remodel, just move everything along.
10, 11, 12, 13. You know, Sherry's getting a lot of elastic bands on those.
I know, I meant to mention that last time. I don't know, it's one deer, a chair, a nice chair, a chair.
Oh, on the base. I will mention that to get that, I didn't even think of that.
Actually, last time I think I crossed it out.
Have you guys checked with the dispatch center to look at their logs or check their log and see how often?
Sorry. They can't do anything if they don't get called.
They do get called, but the officer turns around and says, send this specific company. Instead of saying, send the next on rotation. If they ask for the rotation, it would be fairly done. One truck, the next company, the next company, and then go back to the first company. They don't. They send, send this guy, then the next cop, the next cop, and the next cop.
Had lots of errors of the county over the years.
But just a couple of weeks ago, one company got six cars in a row. We all pay our taxes and I personally had to come and ask to help pay in taxes because we don't make the money we're working in. And it's not fair. We all pay our taxes. We all pay our excise taxes. We've all invested hundreds of thousands of dollars in tow trucks. We all pay our excise taxes, we've all invested hundreds of thousands of dollars in tow trucks. And unfortunately, they gotta go haul for co-pot and get paid $30 a call instead of making a legitimate call in the town we live in. It's just not fair. If it's good for one, it should be good for everybody that pays their taxes. We all have our vehicles, we're everywhere here, we all pay our taxes, we pay our property taxes, our excise taxes. One guy should not get all the business from the police department because they're friends or whatever reason it is. A bad thing is a bad thing and that's what an ordinance does, it says the police chief has to use that rotation. We, we had two other police chiefs, we never had that problem. It was always done by rotation, all three towns dispatch has a rotation, where on the rotation? They just don't ask for a rotation, they ask for a specific company. And they shouldn't be doing that, that's not their position to do that. If the owner of the vehicle says, hey, I want so and so to tow my car because I got in an accident, that's fine, that's their right. They get arrested for being drunk and causing an accident, the next one on rotation should get that car. It shouldn't be that the cop turns around and says, hey, I want to send my friend or, you know, whatever reason. For all we know, they're getting their cars worked on free, we don't know.
Can I add the, the, uh, like to make a motion that you go into executive session?
Motion on the one.
Glad, I guess that would be good, yeah, let's go with that for all who's in favor. Okay, hope you got it.
Motion going to the session to discuss personnel matter pursuant to MRSA, Title 1, Chapter 13, Section 4, 5, 6, 8.
Oh, Wendy's trying to catch up.
You made the motion, you made the motion, we got it. I choose this one. Alright.
There's something else.
That's cool, motion is made, we're going to go to the session on things.